Welcome to the February City Council meeting for the city of Waynesville. We have had need for an executive session and so that's where we've been. So we're a little bit behind on our time, but not by much. So we've already had our roll call. In fact, we're all here tonight. And at this time, I would like you to join me for an invocation. And would you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Reverend Shawn Wilson, would you lead us in prayer?
Would you please pray with me? Heavenly Father, Father God, we thank you for a wonderful day. Thank you for waking us up on this beautiful, beautiful day. I pray for every leader that is present here. We pray that you continue to impart your wisdom, your knowledge, and your understanding in all leaders in this assembly this evening. Father God, we're most graciously appreciative of all those that volunteer their time to come out to make this community great. We ask this in your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. I wasn't in here to announce this, but if you have a cell phone and you need to silence that, please do so. On our agenda tonight, the first thing we need to do is add something to it. Would you, under the airport, which is E, five E, under the airport, would you add to EAS grant agreement with Contour? And with that change, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
And second here by Dr. Brown, and all those in favor. That's unanimous. All right. As usual, and before I stand up here and give a special award tonight, oh, by the way, first of all, Mr. Wallace, are you up there? Hello, there you are. Mr. Wallace is here with his crew. And Mr. Wallace, are we streaming on Facebook? We are. So welcome to the Facebook community, and then of course later, the YouTube community. But tonight, our TV crew is Jason, Lily, and Jordan, and we thank you kids so much for what you do. And you too, Mr. Wallace. One of the fun things again that I get to do is recognize people in our community. And I want to start out by saying that as I start my last year as mayor, and that is fully my intention to not run again for mayor of Waynesville, and so this really starts my last year in office, that one of the things that I wanted to do was to, I believe we disappeared, Mr. Wallace. We're all looking at the TV, wondering where we are.
There's a head. That looks like. There you go, Mike. Bright as the light.
Just think, just think you're on Facebook.
They need your microphone.
Okay. Well, we do tend to have a little fun here, and that's one thing I like about our group, is that we do laugh a little bit. I like that. So again, guys, as I start my last year as mayor of Waynesville, one of the things that I wanted to do was to honor the many, many people who helped to make our city so good to live. And so many of the people that I'm going to recognize here in the next year are people that aren't recognized by the chamber. They're not recognized by MRPC. They are people who just go about their daily business and try to make things better. And just this past week, I honored Brenda Doyle, and there is a copy of her Good Citizen Award in the back. Brenda Doyle is the Executive Director of the Senior Center here in Waynesville St. Robert. She goes above and beyond everything with the seniors. I've been there many, many times, Mike, as you well know, because you're on that board. I wanted to honor her and thank her for everything she has done for our seniors. And so on Facebook page, I put it out that I was going to start honoring people, and I'm not asking for recommendations from people, but if you've got a good one, go ahead. Because right out of the blue, someone wrote me and put me onto a military wife named Brea McPherson. And in fact, the person wrote about Brea, and I went and checked out the page, and I want to tell you that I was thoroughly impressed with you and Brea. And I'm going to introduce her here in just a moment. Do you remember, you guys remember General Smith and his wife when they were here? Well, Venidra and I became very good friends, and every time I would go somewhere with Venidra, her speech was, "To the military wives, we've got to bloom where we're planted." That's what she said all the time. Bloom where you're planted. What opportunities you miss as a military family if you don't jump into the community and become part of the community. And so I am thrilled tonight, City Council, to introduce you to Brea McPherson. Brea started a program called, get ready for it, Tots in the Woods. She has a page on Facebook, and the story that I was told, and you may correct me when you come up, is that when the weather's good, once a week, they meet in our parks, Mr. Wilson. They meet in our parks and highlight our parks, and in doing so, teach these little kids about outdoors and to appreciate the outdoors. And of course, we've got a great outdoors here in our community. So I couldn't think of anybody better to be my first public presentation. And so, City Council, I want to introduce you to Brea McPherson, and she's got fans with her. She brought her fans with her. Come on, kids. Now, are all these your children?
Oh, just one, the boy, the only boy.
Okay. Come on up here, kiddos. I think I'm in love with you. You're the cutest thing in the world. Come up here. We want to be sure and get a picture. And I know some of you can't see this, but this young man has unicorn shoes on. They are just the cutest thing in the world. They're unicorns, complete with the horns. But she doesn't have one. Okay. So, Brea, thank you so much. And thank you for being one of those families that jump in and take part. You have wonderful shoes too. She wanted me to mention she has wonderful shoes too. But anyway, I have a certificate for you. And guys, it says, "In honor of your obvious love of children, your contagious enthusiasm, your giving spirit, and your effective leadership in forming the Tots in the Woods program, and as a military spouse, being a role model for community involvement." And I have a special gift for you.
Oh, wow. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. Okay, kids, can you get in the picture? Look at this lady right here. No, stay right where you are. There you go.
I got it.
Okay. You guys are wonderful. And did I describe your program well enough?
So other than, if the weather said we're out there no matter what, actually.
Very good.
Yeah, as long as it's safe to be out there.
And how many do you have?
Um, there's about 10 regulars, but we are, the group has 200 in it, so we're just consistently trying to get people to come out. We're out there. Megan is also helps me.
Very good. God, I believe Megan is the one who wrote with you. Talk to your mama, honey. She's going to take care of that.
Thank you.
Brea, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. This, well, you can wear it. You want to wear it?
Tell her you need ice cream from Gacy's.
I apologize. If I'd known the kids were going to be here, I would have brought something.
They're fine.
Thank you again very much. How exciting was that? All right, guys. And Shawn, it's kind of apropos that you get to follow that. Bye, guys. Oh, no, no, you're fine. I'm an old school teacher and a grandma. It doesn't bother me. And Shawn, if you would come up, we'll go ahead with our Board and Commission reports, and our first one is Park Board, and that is Shawn Wilson.
Good evening. February Park Report was on February 14th at 6:00 PM at this location. We had just two Park Board members that was absent due to unforeseen circumstances at that particular time. The minutes were approved, and we did have a guest that showed up, so that's what I want to get to, was that was a good opportunity to talk with one of the residents, Ms. Peggy White, who expressed her concern about an issue with the ordinance pertaining to the dogs, whether they should be under leash or voice command. And there was some confusion between the ordinance of the city park and with the city, but I talked to Mr. Harold, and we're going to rectify that, and we also going to consider, you know, all parties. A lot of people like to go to the park and work their dogs and their pets, but also we want to also make sure that it's safe for everyone. So we're not going to do anything drastic or do anything without thinking it all the way through to make sure we can accommodate everyone in the community. We did bring up the opportunity about the dog park as an option. We also looked at selecting one area as a place where you would work your dogs, and then another area away from the trails would be where they would have to have their leash. But again, we still talking about it and discussed what was the intent and concern was, and we really respected the fact that she came and brought it to the Park Board, and she also offered up her services to help us through the process if need be. So we have her contact information. We'll keep her informed as we continue to move forward with making that decision. Park Superintendent, he's been working hard on preparing the park as much as he can. He's been working on mostly his equipment, getting everything in order for the summer and cutting grass and things along that line. His equipment, he says, is pretty much all good to go. And he has been repairing picnic tables as well. So preparing the soccer fields, that's all weather dependent. Of course, right now with the saturation with the snow and the ice, it's just going to be all dependent on when he actually gets started on preparing the fields for that season. On the 23rd, myself and Mr. Brown, the Park Superintendent, and also a couple of the Park Board members, we're going to meet the master gardeners at their proposed master gardener, the community master gardener site in RV Park on the Little Mound. So we're going to go out there and kind of get a good feel of what exactly they're going to do on the ground. So this is going to happen on the 23rd, which is Saturday, and we will just walk it through on Saturday.
What time you going to be there?
10 o'clock.
10 o'clock. 10 o'clock was the time. So we'll go there and just kind of get a good feel of what their vision is pertaining to that project.
Can I tell the City Council while you're on that topic that they've also volunteered to decorate, beautify our welcome sign at exit 156? And this is a new leader for the master gardener, so I'm very excited about her. She is very interested in doing things for the community, so I wanted to let you know that.
And she's also one of the other organizations that are helping us with the Kids to Park Day.
Very good.
On the 7th, we noted there was an evacuation that was, that took place in RV Park due to the hazard of the flood, so they were, they all came back afterwards and moved back in. During that time, Randy took the opportunity to make sure that they did some work on the service pads and made sure everything was prepared for them when they come back, because it wasn't hit or damaged. So they just took advantage of that, which was smart, and got everything squared away for the clients to return. There will be, there weren't any activities in February as far as the park is concerned that were scheduled. The sports program is still going ahead as planned. There's a total of 134 kids participating in winter sports, and it ends on the 23rd, which is also Saturday. The spring sports registration has started, and it'll go through the 22nd, and provisions will be made for additions to teams, and not new teams, but additions to teams all the way through March 1st.
Shawn, do you know how the number of 134 kids, does that compare well to last?
That was just a temporary number. There's more that signed up since then.
Right.
It's still ongoing, so we don't know the final numbers yet. I think, I think she said the numbers were 267 now for soccer, and they've got a few more days left.
Right. And this was since last week. So I received, it was a total of 211, if it's 267, so, and it's not the end yet. So I predict it probably increased, probably about 30, 40, well, I won't say 30, maybe 20 to 25 more people to join. So I think it's been working out pretty good. The sports that they're going to be signing up for is soccer, volleyball, and track. And one of the reasons they started the volleyball is to try to get it off-season so they can have places to practice, because we were running out of the gyms. Everybody's competing for it in the wintertime, so that's also a great opportunity to try something new as a spark.
Is track a new thing?
No, not track.
Is track a new thing? Or else?
Uh, no. We've been doing track for a while. Summer sports, we will be moving forward with the Babe Ruth Chartering, which means we will also be adjusting the registration to the left. More information to follow on that, but a couple of different projects that I will, notable dates is the Major League Baseball Junior Home Run Derby, which will be on May 4th. The Major League Baseball Pitch Hit and Run, which will be on May 11th. And then also, we have the Kids to Park Day. They are participating in that on May 18th, and they will run mini Olympics for the youth. As far as sponsors, notable sponsors, Mr. Lawrence and Karen Beamer have donated basketballs to the program, which we appreciate greatly. Replacements for the worn-out equipment, and all of the teams were very happy to have the new equipment. They was very appreciative of that. We have the Good Sports Equipment Grant that was received by the WSR program that allows us six donation requests over the 2019 and 20, 20 years, and it will be three, three per year with no monetary limit. So I can get more information to provide, just for read ahead information about what types of thing they will be able to request with those grants. But we know with all the support, we're happy to have all that support to be able to just improve what we already have, we have going. There is also a fundraiser, the World Finest Chocolate Fundraiser for the WSR program, which they have 230 boxes of candy bars, which are a dollar a piece, and they're trying to use this fundraising opportunity, and they're encouraging the parents to purchase, or not purchase boxes, but to pick up boxes from the office to help, you know, get support for the sports teams, and some of that goes towards grants and sponsoring kids to play and things like that to reduce the cost. Onto the park updating concerns. We didn't have a lot that was going on, but with the Laughlin Park, Mr. Cade actually requested us to revisit, and he brought it back to the table as we all agreed together that it was a consideration that needs to be made about the trail on the Laughlin Park side, about improving that trail and retain a wall. Talked to Mr. Harold, and we're going to also relook at that and look at how we can make a plan to make that happen and see what the constraints are, so we can move forward with that piece. Mr. Brown talked about, or actually, Mr. Cade had brought up the, there was a tree that it needs to be tended to, and Mr. Brown will remove the limbs once he has a vehicle, once the ground is hard enough to support the vehicle to get in there to do it. Right now, it's too high for him to get in there, and he just gets stuck and tear everything up. RV Park, there was no update, other than what I already mentioned. Glen Haven, the Tiger Park, and Summit Park, all those, no new updates. With the Summit Park, we're still tagging the equipment that we requested last year to upgrade for the toddler equipment for the Summit community, which we'll finalize in the next meeting. Gave Mr. Lawrence, he brought in a lot of good resources, but we also received new documents and a new book in another organization, so we want to make sure we look at everything that we have out there that's new and try to get the best equipment for that community. Old business, I briefed the update on the Kids to Park Day that's scheduled for May 18th. Again, that takes place on May 18th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And right now, we have about 12 organizations that are participating, and those 12 organizations from Outlaw RC, Total Body Fitness, the Department of Natural Resources, the Waynesville City Library, the Master Gardeners, the 4H Program. Fort Wood Escapes is going to set up a mobile escape room for the kids in the park on that day. We have local churches that are going to participate with events as well, and individuals that have volunteered. So we anticipated it being a great day for our youth, and we will make contact with the toddlers in the woods, and we'll make sure that we incorporate them as well and try to see what they want to bring to the table.
Extension's not involved this year?
Missouri Extension is also.
Is involved.
With the 4H, and they're doing, they're doing quite a bit with us. I already talked a little bit about Mr. Beamer providing the opportunity to share the update on the Summit Park, and we're going to revisit that in detail about the type of equipment. We're just at the point now, just trying to make sure we make the right choices in the equipment and not duplicate what we don't need and really get what's needed, and with the space that we have for us, because there is a requirement for the swing, I think it's like a three to one ratio, that it has to be placed in, so we want to make sure we get the right equipment to maximize the space. New business, we talked about, I kind of threw it on the table, about a SOP for our adoptive park, and the intent was just to really just do a little bit of background research on each park and provide a pamphlet to let people know what they're actually volunteering for. That way, they can make sure that they, you know, if you only have, you have a small team, you're not going to go and say, "We'll take the Waynesville Park, we'll take Glen Haven," versus, so we just want to give them the opportunity to make the right decision to, so they can make that commitment and keep it, and it won't be too much for them. That was really only, the only new thing that was brought to the table. I think that's pretty much it. The next meeting will be on March 14th at 6:00 PM, and we will still have it inside here at the municipal building, and our meeting was adjourned at 6:51 PM.
Any questions, anybody?
Where are they selling the rolls?
You can get them from, of course, the parents that are picking them up, but the WSR office, you can just walk in there anytime, right here. The one here. And purchase as many as you like.
That's pizza.
Okay, that's a pizza for everybody.
That's pizza.
Hey, the boxes have several bars in them?
Yes.
Because I saw that, and I thought, that's not very much money. You're not making very much money with 230 candy bars, but it's the boxes.
Boxes. It's 231.
Very good.
Did I say candy bar?
There's a lot of boxes. I will come and get one. Okay? Anything?
I meant to bring with me.
Yeah, that'd be good, because I want a whole case. You're probably all my candy.
Yeah.
And then hand it up.
No, I'm going to sell them. No, I'm going to sell them. I'll do it. Okay, anything else for Shawn? Thank you, Shawn.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys. Lawrence, thank you. Appreciate you guys. Could someone get me some water, please?
Yes, please.
Another one here, please. Okay, so we have planning and zoning. We had a planning and zoning meeting, Mr. Clark.
Yes, ma'am.
It was a good meeting, actually.
It was. Planning and zoning, we met on February 12th. It was a very light night, but the first action items of business was the nomination for both the Chairman and Secretary of Planning and Zoning. Janet Crowder was nominated for the chairmanship, and Doug Beard was nominated as Secretary. Votes were held respectively on those positions and carried unanimously. We had a couple of new members on planning and zoning. On the 12th, we had Trudy Dills and Yvonne Reeves-Chalm. So the next item of business is basically all the committee members introduce themselves. Following that, Mr. Harold had a couple items. First one, which was very well put together, was basically an overview of the responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is very beneficial for not only the new members, but as a refresher for those of us that have been there a while. He followed that up with a summary of current city projects and update on the status of those. There's two streets that were introduced for possible vacation. That was for information purposes only. That is going to be going, those will be going before the Roads and Grounds Committee for initial action. And that was basically the extent of our activities on the 12th. We adjourned at 6:04 PM, and we will convene again on March 12th.
Very good. And it was a very good meeting, though I thought that people were very interested, and we had good conversations. Any questions for Alan? Okay, our standing committee reports. Keep talking, Alan. Roads and Grounds.
I was not that much.
Let's see, who was the chairman of this? Clarence, was it you? Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Clarence Liberty.
The meeting was called to order at 4:30. Councilman Conley sat in for Councilman Clark. Discussion on grainage issue, Woodlake Hills. Mrs. McDonald stated that it takes 60 million hours, estimated three days to complete. Councilman Conley made a motion, offer cost share options to the residents in the area where the residents paying for materials and the city covering the equipment and labor costs. Councilman France stated he would like to continue to be added, that the city will not landscape the homes that to the root area. The motion passed. Recreation Trail Grant Award. Mrs. Fox reviewed the progress that had been made on NEPA review. She stated that Section 106 review required archaeological survey. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers waived the jurisdiction on determination and approved us to move forward. Discussion on potential vacating of streets. Dewitt Street and Valley Road were both discussed, and it was just preliminary discussion. Sidewalk project, Brian Adams presented plans, how he'd like to use his budget and put sidewalks. Stated there was two areas that he'd like to replace. Proposed no parking area in the alley behind post office. Mr. Harold stated post office has contacted the city, asked for no parking in the area of the alley behind the post office. Mr. Harold recommends adding additional signage and markings to notify drivers not to park in the street where they will be blocked in the alley. He stated that if this doesn't fix the problem, the city would need to obtain voluntary support from the church and other businesses to move forward. Street department update, Brian Adams stated street departments completed several work orders, trimmed back trees, completed routine equipment repairs. Stayed the hallway, several dump truck loads of stuff that was illegally dumped in the industrial park, including large furniture. Mr. McDonald stated that there is an allied gate at the industrial park to try to dislodge. Mr. McDonald stated that there is an allied gate at the industrial park to try to discourage illegal dumping. There was a need for closed session, entered closed session, four fifty-seven, and came out of closed session at five oh-four. The meeting was then adjourned at five oh-four, next meeting scheduled will be held March seventh at four-thirty PM.
Very good. Lot of, uh, things going on with Roads and Grounds, it's probably one of the most active , uh, that and utilities, active committees that we have. Utility committee, any questions for Clarence, for that committee? Okay, and utilities, Councilman France?
I called the meeting to order on February fifth at three-thirty. Uh, we established a forum. First order of business, we've had no, so, no constituents there for making comments, and we moved on. I did amend the, uh, agenda to move, uh, net metering ordinance to closed session. Missouri Public Service Commission, they've done a natural gas inspection, there are a few little gigs on it, which normally, every time you get a new team to inspect, they find something, we immediately did our corrections, submitted it to them, and we have, uh, got favorable feedback, we passed. Uh, research on black, backflow preventers. Basically, backflow preventers keeps sewage from flowing back into a residence or business office, a business, uh, so, we're researching that, uh, an ordinance in regard to, uh, future construction and current commercial construction.
And I've told Mr. Harold I would be very interested in having, uh, concise information on that, so that I could get that out to the public. To me, it's just a great investment for your home, and especially if you live down, uh, I live on a hill, so it's probably not necessary for me.
Remember, Home Valley, uh, we had a lot of homes.
So, it's something I think we need to let the people know, you know, it, it's much better than having sewage backed up in your basement.
Uh, okay, uh, we, uh, we've sent back for more information on a few key items in regard to it. Uh, proposed ordinance of improving electric safety, basically, this is in regard to new construction, to where you have shut-off switches, to where, basically, uh, you're not gonna putting power back out into the system, if you're running a generator, or you're net metering, or whatever, uh, you're not, 'cause when our line begins to work, and if you've got a generator running that's, you've just plugged it into a wall, it can kick back onto the system and, uh, hurt, injure some of our people. Updates on Northern Heights Water Tank, uh, we've proposed agreement with Anderson Engineering for pad design, uh, this is one for Northern Heights. The first proposals add us, uh, well into over two-hundred thousand, uh, for a pad with the hundred-foot tower, so basically, we've modified, uh, we'll still be able to meet the requirements necessary, uh, to ensure that, uh, location has plenty of water, and, and if it's out of power, we can push water to it. So, uh, that, we're, we've still got that coming to us. Department of Digs, another business, e-billing research, Mr. York is still working on some software to provide e-billing for our customers, uh, the new wellhouse for number, for well number two, that's the one down towards, uh, Mrs. Ikor's land, near the, uh, funeral home, that was built in the forties, and if you've been down in there and it's overgrown in the past, they've got it cleaned up, but, uh, there's no real saving that building to meet our needs, it needs to be raised, so, uh, we're going to be, that's one of our projects, we'll start in the May timeframe, is replacing that, which, uh, that's right now, one of our busiest wells also. Uh, gas department, Mr. York stated his department installed three new services, and scheduled to install gas at the new Jehovah Witness Church, out past, uh, just before the old Honda shop, Al West, uh, Honda shop, uh, they weren't ready for it, we had all the equipment in place, and now, you know, they're getting more ready, their construction was kind of slowed by some of the weather. Uh, electric department, Mr. Sheldon stated that his department had four power outages, multiple work orders, uh, they will be assisted, we had two people assist up in Columbia when they got the big snow, we sent them up there, uh, worked on pole yard fencing and lights, and all transformers moved to the pole yard, worked on tree trimming, turned in three net metering reports, which is a state requirement, and working on consolidating all materials, construction materials into one area. Water service, Dr. Young said that his department has been working on smoke testing in different areas in the city with minimal issues, researching old IONI reports to check parts of town, scheduled some training classes at the Phelps Health Center in Waynesville from March nineteenth to April twenty-third, and finished end-of-year plant reports and sent to VNR, uh, and one of the things that, uh, Jack and us guys found is, uh, down towards, uh, Pastagin vines, down in that, uh, little low area, apparently, we had, uh, some, uh, con- some construction down there, we marked it for them, and they, uh, missed the mark, and basically, four of our water pipes, we've identified who it is, they're going, they sent to Billis, uh, so we replaced that water line and that, uh, sewer line, and, so, it will be reimbursed to the city.
Very good.
Uh, there was a necessity for a closed session, uh, for, uh, real estate and legal in accordance with, uh, what was that, the reserve, oh, what's that called, RSMO?
Sun chai bao.
Pardon me?
Just a sun chai bao, that works.
Okay. Motion was made by Councilman Connolly to go into closed session at four sixteen, and a second by myself, uh, we carried at four forty-two PM, the committee came out of closed session, so that was approved. So, with net metering ordinance, Councilman Connolly made a motion to change the net metering application fee to fifty dollars, uh, Councilman France seconded, and all of us were in favor. Having noted the business, I adjourned the meeting at four forty-three, next meeting is March fifth at three thirty, here in City Hall.
Very good, we do have two ordinances tonight, and, uh, if you would notice, council, that, uh, they have simply put ordinance twenty, two thousand and seven in there, just so you can see what we did several years ago, but we have ordinance, uh, twenty-three forty-eight, counselor?
Yes, and ordinance amending ordinance number two thousand and seven, paragraph six-point-six-point-three, in order to adjust the application fee for net metering of the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date. And ordinance amending ordinance number two zero zero seven, paragraph six-point-six-point-three, in order to adjust the application fee for net metering in the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date.
Very good, Mr. Harold? Briefly remind, I believe we discussed this?
Okay, we're just reducing our, uh, application fee to fifty dollars, we may have to initiate an impact fee to recover some, or other costs, but our application fee's gonna be fifty dollars.
Very good. We discussed this earlier also, in executive session, any other questions? I would entertain a motion. Motion from Mike. Second from Ed. Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bulker?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. We have ordinance number twenty-three forty-nine, counselor?
Thank you, and ordinance improving the electrical safety for customers in the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date, and ordinance improving the electrical safety for customers in the city of Waynesville, fixing an effective date.
Very good, I remind everybody, if you're talking, be sure and turn your microphone on, so Mr. Wallace can hear you up there, because we're on Facebook, you know? So, Mr. Harold, would you discuss this very briefly, and then?
Sure, ma'am, this is just to improve electrical safety in the city, and it's for, if you're, it's for new construction, and if you're doing a major renovation of your electrical system, for instance, you're installing a new breaker box or something like that, and it's for residential and commercial buildings, and it's, uh, requiring a disconnect, so if there is a fire or other emergency situation, the firemen could disconnect, you know, your electrical service, out, you know, of, by your meter, and that's a little more safer than waiting for us to come and either disconnect it from, uh, take out your meter, or disconnect it from the, from the power.
Very good.
And it's in keeping with the, the fire code that we do have, but, uh, our electric department, uh, we kinda wanted to, and the building department wanted to have an ordinance, uh, to, to support the, uh, basically, the provisions in the fire.
Very good. Any questions? I'd entertain a motion. Motion by Mike?
Second.
Second by Mike, Curtis? And, Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Bulker?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. Now, we have finance and human resources, and that is Clarence.
Meeting was called to order at five o'clock. Mr. Harold reported to the committee that as of this date, we had four-point-two million in the city bank account, with three-point-one million in reserve and restricted accounts, and over eight-hundred thousand in available money. We reviewed ordinance for mutual aid, Mr. Harold explained we need to revise the current policy. The ordinance will allow Mr. Harold the ability to negotiate agreements prior to mutual aid being provided. Other business, uh, review comprehensive budget management tool on debt management, Mr. Harold presented by Stifel, Nicholas and Company Incorporated for the committee to review. This report provides a summary of outstanding debt for certificates of participation. Update on the two thousand and eighteen budget, per audit. Mr. Harold reported auditors were here the week of February fourth, initial report, we received a good and clean audit. Mr. Harold reported city had been awarded Volkswagen grant. The grant was completed by Ann and Fox, and we were one of seven in the state to be awarded the money. This grant is a fifty-fifty grant, will, it will allow the city to buy a new dump truck for half the price. It was stated that we had need for closed session for legal personnel, real estate, in accordance with RSMO six-ten, oh-twenty-one, one, two, and three. We moved one into closed session. Committee went into closed session at five-ten. At six o'clock, came out of closed session, and regular session, and then the meeting was adjourned. Next meeting will be held on March fourteenth at five PM.
Okay, questions for Clarence, anybody? Okay, and I, we do have an ordinance, and it does involve mutual aid, and, and I'll ask Mr. Harold to add anything to that, uh, even though Clarence didn't mention it, it's ordinance twenty-three fifty, counselor?
And ordinance amending the city of Waynesville Employee Personnel Manual regarding overtime policy and procedures in regard to mutual aid, fixing an effective date, and ordinance amending the city of Waynesville Employee Personnel Manual regarding overtime policy and procedures in regard to mutual aid, fixing an effective date.
Very good, Mr. Harold, would you like to discuss that rule, just briefly?
Sure, we, we need to amend it, our ordinance, when they're called in, upon the doing mutual aid, sometimes they're working in difficult situations, and, uh, and, and normally, the pay is a little bit higher than the normal pay that you'd receive, for instance, when they went to Florida, they got sixteen, they worked sixteen-hour days, and got double-time to full-time. That was coordinated between the Missouri Public Utility Alliance and the Florida, Missouri Public Utility Alliance. So, we needed to amend our, our own personnel policies to allow that type of activity when our, uh, employees are called on, uh, for mutual aid.
Very good. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike, second by, that's Cecil.
Yes.
And, um, are there any questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bulker?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. Okay, Police Committee, Councilman Connolly?
Yes, the Police Committee met at, on February the seventh, the whole committee was there, and we had no guests, well, we had a guest, Councilman Liberty was a guest, but no citizens there. Uh, we discussed the disorderly conduct ordinance, apparently, the one we had was written about nineteen forty, and I believe we had to be drunk to be disorderly, uh, and that, we all know that's not the case, you can be disorderly and not drunk, and drunk and not disorderly, so, we have a, a new, I don't, and we all heard the expression, drunk and disorderly, and that's the way ordinance was written, and that's what, that was what was in there. Uh, we have a new ordinance for you on that. We had a, uh, a, uh, update on the police department, from the chief, said, uh, Officer Watson had resigned to move closer to home, was Montana, I believe, uh, and Officer Greg Snyder moved from part-time to full-time, and accidents have been down since Officer Snyder was hired as a traffic officer. The plan is to keep him as a full-time traffic officer. Uh, he will not be doing the other patrolling, those will be available to assist other officers as needed, but his primary focus will be on traffic. Uh, we have, he was, uh, information on the frequency talk group sharing, which allows, uh, the Missouri Highway Patrol to have radios on our frequencies, so they can talk in case of, of emergencies, and we signed off on that. And Chief Snyder, or Officer Snyder, successfully completed his, uh, new hire crisis intervention training. Other business, uh, Morris Corporation of Rollup provided one full year of Royal Canine Dog Food to the Waynesville Police Department for our canine.
Nice.
Uh, at no cost. The bags are valued at sixty-five dollars a piece, and the partner received thirty-six bags. We need to thank the, the Morris Corporation for that, that is very nice. They, uh, they did request that they could use our city park for canine training exercises in exchange with donations, seems very good. They had a problem with post certification, and that had been straightened out, it was probably the original files not going through to, to the post. There was no need for closed session, we adjourned at three forty-three, next meeting is on March the seventh.
Very good, questions for Ed?
For the information of people watching this, what does post stand for, some, some people watching this may not know.
Oh.
Peace officer standard training.
Thank you.
Standard training.
Uh, we do have an ordinance connected with Police Command, we're, uh, did a very good job of discussing that, and that is, uh, something that will bring our ordinances up to state law concerning disorderly conduct, it's number twenty-three fifty-one, counselor?
And ordinance amending ordinances relating to disorderly conduct, repeating conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date, and ordinance amending ordinances relating to disorderly conduct, repeating conflicting ordinances, fixing an effective date.
I'm reading this, I want to be sure and know what it says.
Yes.
Make sure you're not disorderly.
Exactly. Uh, I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Ed, and second by Clarence, and any other questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Councilwoman Bulker?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
And that ordinance passes. I would always like to remind the public that we really have discussed these things for a long time in our committees, and it's not just something that everybody goes along with, we, we know, we know about these things way ahead of time.
Right.
And, by the way, I appreciate you kids, uh, with the video class, you have patience, Kolor, appreciate you. Okay, our joint airport, uh, Mr. Harold?
Yes, ma'am, we had the meeting on January thirtieth, uh, we reviewed the January budget with the, uh, airport board, we talked about fuel cells, which is trending upward, so that's good, we talked about the increasing price for our fuel truck, and we're looking at some options there. We, uh, introduced the Vernon's and McDonald's, our new, uh, consultants, and we talked about, uh, a variety of things, future projects, uh, regarding the airport. Uh, we received an update on the parallel taxi project, we're still attempting to get approval, uh, of the chain, uh, the military chain of command to fit in the parallel taxi way. We discussed, um, modifications to the current terminal to handle the contour flights, now that, now there's thirty people capable of flying thirty people in and out, and the terminal, uh, would be challenged to handle, handle thirty people. We talked about the Part One Thirty-Nine cer- certification, we, uh, it's normally a process that takes several months.
That's a while.
This is the, this is, uh, we, we had to accomplish it in about three weeks due to a change in FAA personnel, so we're kinda proud of that, we're proud of accomplishing the, uh, the manual.
We received the Part 139 certification. This allowed us to handle 30 plane jets by our first flight on February 12th.
Wow.
So we made it just in time, probably in record time. Some of the people said they've never heard of anybody getting a Part 139 in three weeks in more than we take six months or more.
So compliments to the staff.
Yes.
We attended the board of directors meeting today for SOP and that was one of the things that they discussed there and complimented our staff on that.
Let's see, we reviewed the SOP marketing report and Amber presented a proposed budget to use our marketing funds that we get from MODOC and we showed them the first take on a commercial that we plan on showing at the theaters. I think Amber and myself reviewed.
Haven't seen that yet.
Reviewed, updated one. We had a few suggestions. We reviewed an updated commercial today and it looks pretty good. So we're going to get that and show that basically at the theaters, you know, prior to the show and we're using our marketing funds to do that. And we also talked about the inaugural flight that was held on February 12th.
And a lot of us went on that trip and it was really a nice day. Everything went well and I was very impressed. But let me tell you, when you started talking about terminal, there were 30 of us there that morning plus other people and it was packed in that building. So there's definitely a need.
But none of us had luggage either.
Yeah.
If we had luggage and things like that, that would have been more of a challenge.
There were no places to sit.
Yes.
So we all just kind of stood around.
Yes.
And so.
So we're working to do that, we just have not, we're still waiting for approval to put in the modular units and then we'll have to order them. So that's, that's some of the challenges we're facing at the airport.
And for the public, I know we've done our best to try to get this out to everybody, all the different ways that we can. Mr. Marina in the back. But at Contour Airlines is jet service. That's a big deal for us. It's a great move upwards. And, you know, I think back, I've been involved in city government since '03 and I, you know, Mike, I believe Mike and I were on the original airport committee back in the day, you know, and how far we have come with the airport and all the good things that we have done there. And I think a lot of people in the general public don't realize the importance of the airport to our region and it is something that is very important. And people that are associated with Fort Lauderdale would know that. And, and business, economic development, it's good for that. So I'm very excited about what's going on at the airport and we do have an ordinance to create our agreement with Contour Airlines. And this is ordinance number 2352, counselor.
And ordinance authorizing the City of Waynesville execute an EAS grant agreement and air services agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, U.S. Department of Transportation and Corporate Flight Management, Inc., DBA Contour Airlines fixing an effective date. And ordinance authorizing the City of Waynesville execute an EAS grant agreement and air services agreement between the City of Waynesville, City of St. Robert, U.S. Department of Transportation and Corporate Flight Management, Inc., DBA Contour Airlines fixing an effective date.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
I made a motion.
Dr. Brown.
Sir.
And second by Mike. We have again talked about this in executive session, but is there anything for the public that you'd like to say or did I do a pretty good job?
Did a good job. This is a little bit different than the Cape Air. We had to enter into a grant arrangement with the Department of Transportation. So it'll be a pass-through to fund the contour flights similar as a grant. We took the money for the contour flights from the Department of Transportation.
Very good. Any questions? Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Counselor France.
Oh, yes.
Counselor Conley.
Yes.
Counselor Liberty.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Absolutely.
Counselor Curtis.
Yes.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Bowman-Lowker.
Yes.
That ordinance passes. And our last committee meeting is economic development governmental affairs and that is Chairwoman Lowkert.
We're all meeting together at 5:00 and we've been very good. First order of business, we talked about the social media policy and that we've had some problems in the past with the social media policy that the sentence term law does apply and we have to follow the rules. So we took a look at that policy and we're going to bring it back for discussion in March. Second item, we talked about the ISO building code. The current code that we are using is an outdated code that was adopted back in 2006. So we are researching new code and looking at the sections to see if there are options that we can adopt and we will come back and take a look at that in the future as well. State legislation, Mr. Harold discussed SB 66 that would make cities complete detailed mapping systems. MPUA is opposing the bill and Mr. Harold states that he would like the city to oppose that bill. Mr. Harold stated that the bill is designed to help large corporations who are buying out small municipalities, saving them the time and the money of having to map the utilities themselves. We also recommend opposing the bill 122, which is a bill to limit government services when private offerings are available. MML legislation report, Mr. Harold presented the committee with the MML legislation report which shows whether MML is supportive, neutral, or opposed to any upcoming legislation. We also discussed the license offices. The fee is being increased or, yeah, fee is being justification is being to increase the fees. The last time fees were increased was in 1999.
Of course, it hasn't been done, but they're going to, I mean, Mr. Lynch isn't supportive of that also.
Yeah, I'm 20 years old.
Yeah.
Economic development issues, the City of Waynesville coins. So Mr. Harold presented the committee with a markup of the newly designed City of Waynesville coins. These are coins that are handed out to members of the community for various reasons and the new coins should arrive in April.
Very good. We're excited about that. I really use those for the military more than anything else.
The OEA grant, Mr. Harold presented the committee with the overview of how Fort Leonard Wood Institute and Sustainable OZOS partnerships have utilized the OEA green funds so far and state of the city has benefited at the airport from these funds due to a survey that was completed in regards to local air service. And we discussed the upcoming events of that time or the community leadership banquet that was held on February 8th and Contour Airlines inaugural flight that was held on February 12th. There was no other business. We did go into closed session. We entered closed session at 5:15 and came out of closed session at 5:25. Our next meeting will be at 5:00 on March 5th.
Okay, and can I just add a couple of things that some of you might like to know? You know, we rely on our volunteers so much in a small town and that's especially true with our local festivals. And I did get the word, I met with the Waynesville Downtown Business Association last night and I did get the word that the only festivals that are going to be held downtown are going to be the Freedom Fest, which usually is around Flag Day, which is June 14th, June 15th. And then Oktoberfest, which is now of course, for Oktoberfest and Oktoberfest on the square will be all the same time. For Oktoberfest has been taken over by the FROG runners, Melissa Martinez. And then of course, the Waynesville Downtown Business Association will continue their Christmas on the square. They have dedicated themselves to that event and I think they really gear up for that about September. So I wanted to let you guys know that. At one time, my goodness, I think we had six festivals that took place on the square and it just wears people out. And so as you again, as you rely on volunteers to do those things, you just have to kind of roll with the flow a little bit. So we do have a resolution as other business and I believe this may but just be some kind of bookkeeping thing.
It's just normal. They need to update who our directors are and I've been the director and Mitch has been the assistant director. We're very active in the, in the Missouri Public Utility Alliance. I serve as the chairman of the board for the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission and as a secretary for the Municipal Gas Commission.
So guys, I'm just going to read this to you. This is a resolution and please notice that it's the first resolution of 2019. And it says, "A resolution appointing the City of Waynesville Director and Alternate Director to the Missouri Public Utility Alliance, Missouri Association of Municipal Utilities, Missouri Public Energy Pool, Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, and the Municipal Gas Commission of Missouri." And as you read down there, you see that it is Mr. Harold and Mr. McDonald. I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mike.
Second.
Second by Cecil. And I guess since it's a resolution, just hands me all right. All those in favor, raise your hands please. And that's unanimous. Congratulations Mitch and Bruce. We do have the city administrator report, Mr. Harold.
Mayor, I think I covered most of the items. I'll just did a few of the highlights. I just wanted to highlight the audit again. We're one of the first cities our auditors are able to get to in the year and that's because we're, we get our books ready early for them in the year. And I got to compliment our team headed up by our finance officer, Stephanie Luthen, for that. And our talks with him are very favorable. Looks like we'll get a clean audit and with an increase in revenue and a decrease in outstanding long-term liabilities or debt. Youth sports, here's one of the boxes.
Very good.
There's 60 candy bars in a box and the mayor and city council people, if you want to buy a box, you're limited to 10 boxes. So I just wanted to actually know that. But, and if you want to, if you want to sample some after this, it's only a dollar.
Okay.
Goodbye, you poor.
Huh? Did you volunteer?
Oh, we volunteered.
I appreciate that.
No, Mr. Harold.
Who had the phone go off?
Registration.
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
Registration's really picked out for the youth sports programs and they are looking for coaches. So I just want to put out the word there, they're looking for coaches for soccer and volleyball is what they need right now. We want to mention, we won a high award at the Chamber Chili Cook-Off.
Well, Bruce, you won first place. Says you won second place.
I'd like to, I'd like the chili chicks to stand up and hold their, and get their trophies there, please.
Oh, somebody take a picture.
We need to.
John, could you take a picture? Somebody take a picture of the girls. And Bruce. The girls and Bruce.
And Bruce.
And Bruce. We don't get to.
I didn't plan for that.
You're a fool.
Yeah, you got that.
Columbia.
Yeah, we'll just call him Michelle.
We won, we won second place for the chili, second place for showmanship and second place for the.
People's choice.
People's choice.
Okay.
How about Mr. Jimmy Allen?
Hey, we should get in the middle of them, young ladies.
Somebody had to be a quality control. Somebody had to be quality control. Yeah, thank you.
Wait a minute, what about the extra spicy?
Oh, our chili was extra spicy.
All right.
Great.
I was very proud of you guys. I thought our chili was one of the best.
We had a blast.
And thank you for doing that.
And Mayor, I think subject to your question, that's my report.
I was going to compliment our street department. You know, we've had what, two events, I believe? And I think that they have responded really well. And, you know, you always get your complaints, but for the most part, people are very complimentary of our, of our street department and I'm proud of them.
And some of those events are very challenging depending on the rain, the ice, the snow. It's a variety of elements. It sometimes makes clearing the streets a little more difficult than if it's just pure snow.
Very good. Okay, anything else, Mr. Harold?
No.
Okay, we have city council comments. Cheryl will start with you since your phone went off.
I just want to let everybody know that, you know, hopefully the weather will start warming up and we will have to watch out for people as they start playing outside like the little ones.
Very good. Cecil?
I'd like to say this is probably one of my favorite times of the year. The father-daughter dance is on post this Saturday. Just let all the community know that the father-daughter dance is going to go on on Saturday. Go buy some tickets, have dads and daughters dress up. It gives mom a night off.
Yeah, and I'm going to tell you, usually those are sold out. In fact, one year they had to have two. They had two of them. Alan.
Love you, man.
Okay, and Mike?
I just want to compliment all the city council people.
Aren't we fun?
We're fun, but sometimes the position is not fun.
Yeah, exactly.
But I lost my dad last month and he said when I got the position, he said, "You're going to make half the people happy and half the people mad." Just study your packet and make the best informed decision you can. And I think that's what we did.
I like that. Very good. Thank you, Mike.
Want to point out, Contour Airlines, great place to fly. 28 minutes to St. Louis. Parking is free out of the base, is that correct?
Yes.
So there's no parking cost in St. Louis if you drive down. 28 minutes down is pretty nice.
That's amazing.
Plus, and I keep saying this to people, if you're a carry-on baggage person like me, you don't have to go back through TSA. So it's a real plus. Now, if you check baggage, it's a different story for a while. We're hopefully, we're going to get those agreements done. Clarence?
Thank you to all the volunteers that we have. You're, you're the ones that helped make things happen. I thank all the departments in the City of Waynesville to include Mr. Harold and his staff at City Hall. Although it is warming up, we're expecting some more bad weather. Please drive careful.
Very good. Ed?
You know, like I said, we're expecting more bad weather if you believe the weatherman. Somebody over the weekend explained to me that the weatherman was the only guy who could do a job after I'm half five as he considered good at his job. Weather turns bad, watch your driver. We have a little accident, I'm adding to it.
And Mike?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, I've got just two or three things here. First off, I want to say that I sneaked a peek at Facebook while the reports were going on and we are live on Facebook. I shared it on my page and, and guess what, who's been watching us? My friend in England. So everybody, hello to Chris Buckley. He's my friend in England and hopefully one of these months not too far in the future, I'm going to be visiting him. So that's kind of cool. And then in your packet, I, we have a copy of our proclamation that we took to MRPC. And on both of these things, I said to Michelle earlier, Michelle does such a great job of these proclamations. She makes them look so nice and of course, she's been sick and been in the hospital and so I had to just, you know, I just had to do the best I could and so that's what I did. And then another fun one that I did, and I think some of you may remember this young man. He was one of my students years ago, but Jeremy Woodall, who is Finn, Mr. Finn in Hull Valley, this is his son-in-law. And he retired from his service and so I sent a special proclamation to him and I want you to take the time to read his service. It's amazing. And so I was proud to do that. And then last night, I met with the Waynesville Downtown Business Association and this is just for information. This is really not for discussion tonight because we will begin bringing this stuff to your committees. But one of the things that I had always been interested in as mayor is making our historic square one-way. With some people, it is a very controversial topic. I would tell you that I had an excellent meeting last night with the Waynesville Downtown Business Association. I probably had 12 people there and for the most part, every one of them had good suggestions. Now, there are a few that are opposed to it, but most all of them want it or they're open to the suggestion. So again, I have discussed this, I believe, Alan, with planning and zoning. I mentioned it. I'm now taking it to the Waynesville Downtown Business Association. I will be talking to law enforcement people, including the sheriff, and then I will be talking with the county commission. Obviously, they're involved in it. And then I will also then begin to bring it to our committee system and see what you guys think about this. I mean, and I said to everybody that I've talked to, this is not some heavy-handed thing that I'm trying to push on people. I want to do what's right for our community. And to me, one-way around the square makes perfect sense. It creates parking spaces. It creates a constant flow of traffic. It eliminates the problems at our two intersections. There's just so many good things about it. I would also tell you that we are considering, and this is not an announcement, but we have a full-time traffic officer now and we are considering enforcing our parking downtown.
Yeah.
And I would tell you that that of course got everybody's attention. And I would tell you that that, of course, got everybody's attention. So we will be, this is not an announcement, we're going to be discussing all of that, and obviously talking with Chief Cordova, who's in the back, and making the best decision that we can for our community. But those things, I think, are, would be an important legacy to leave. I want to tell you this, every, I'm telling you the truth, every historic square in Missouri is one-way. You can't find an historic town in Waynes, in Missouri that does not have one-way traffic.
When we had Missouri S&amp;T, their students come over here.
I have a copy of that.
They had to study several projects.
Yes.
One of them was our square.
Yes.
And that was one of their recommendations, is that we make it one-way to increase the number of parking spaces.
And I do have a copy of that, and as we get into it in the committees, I will be bringing that information and sharing certain things with you. But again, we're really not for discussion tonight, but I just wanted to let you guys know that we are beginning to talk about this. And so you, as council people, need to be aware of that, and be listening to your constituents too, and seeing what kind of response that you get. Okay? Anything else for the good of the community? Then this meeting is adjourned.